All right. It's time to get down to business for our study session on October 25th, 2021. And we have got a really fun, positive study session today concerning the arts. So I will turn this over to Mr. Anderson and he can get us started here.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. And it is going to be fun. I think it's going to, hopefully, in your packet, we provided you with some information that will help inspire some questions or some thoughts, or to reinforce the positive impact that the arts have in our community besides just quality of life, or art for art's sake. As I get started here, I also would like to point out that we have some members of the cultural community here, both business leaders, board members, and directors from some of the agencies that you'll be hearing about or hearing from shortly. And today's presentation is kind of broken into two parts. We're going to go through relatively quickly on highlights for the River Festival. And then in conjunction with the closing of the month, the National Arts and Humanities Month will be going over some of the big picture things of what I hope, if it's of benefit to you, that we might consider doing on an annual basis, to just provide you with the latest updates in this important part of our community. So with that, the first slide, Scott, the River Festival, as you know, was canceled last year. As we were closing out this year's fiscal year, it was looking somewhat positive that despite lower numbers, we might actually finish a little bit to the positive. And then the city manager put the brakes on my enthusiasm and said, no, I'd like for the Commissioners to hear about the total impact of both years. So to give you a quick summary in terms of the festival budget, it's $525,000 a year, roughly, to produce a festival. One-third of that is privately fundraised through the Arts and Humanities Foundation. The other two-thirds come from earned revenue: booth fees, commissions on food sales, wristband sales. Wristbands represent 40% of the income for the festival each year. As you are well aware, with the cancellation, we canceled in 2020, about three weeks before the press conference, so many things had been done. Letterhead had been printed. Some preliminary marketing had been done, printing of a brochure that goes statewide, about 20,000 copies of that brochure distributed through Visit Salina and through our offices and used at point of purchase throughout the city. Those were not recoverable expenses. On the other hand, we had some things like deposits to artists, deposits to performers for a particular work. And through the hard work of the staff, we were able to retain virtually all of that. We did receive and then refund artists' booth fees because we were canceling the event. But other than that, the deposits for musicians and the deposits for visual artists for art installations and some of the special things, we were able to carry over to 2021. Hence, that was city manager's Craig's impetus to say, let's go ahead and show Commissioners the total of all of that. We also, as you're well aware, we were seeing you just a couple of weeks before the event as the state changed guidelines. And our staff and committees and boards were constantly pivoting leading up to the event, hoping for the best, but really not sure what a date and time change, health regulations, the public's anxiety and enthusiasm for the event, what effect that might have. Go ahead and go to the next one, Scott. For this year, and these are, I don't want to read to you, but we lost about half of an evening with an early closure of the rain. That made a substantial difference on both our gate revenue on Thursday night and our food sales. And as a reminder, we get about 18% of the gross sales from each of the food vendors as part of the income that I said that we generate. And then overall, the attendance was about one-third. We had an average Saturday for the entirety of the weekend. And so with that on top of some of just the other administrative things of pulling this off, the date change was good for some, it was not good for others. There's a lot of folks who plan a year in advance for their time at the lake, or a cabin, or a reserved camping space, and other things. And again, with the health considerations, we saw a number of businesses show hesitancy to have their employees available to volunteer, or they just couldn't get enough of interest. And then with the state guidelines saying, we recommend quarantining if you're not vaccinated and don't social distance. And so all of those together created some real significant challenges for us. And frankly, I thought I'd be reporting a much larger loss to you. In addition, we had some increased expenses. We had to take the children's packets, the arts and crafts, and find a way to repurpose those into to-go sacks. We had to buy sacks for that to happen and then reorient our volunteers in the distribution of those. That activity was popular as a workaround, and we still did face painting. But rather than having people face-to-face and doing that, they did an airbrushed tattoo and the kid was able to sit at a right angle to the painter and help avoid prolonged contact. And it was a very fast process, anyway. So we learned a lot. We felt good about the adjustments that were made and how the public responded. But it did involve quite a bit of change. And that lower-than-anticipated attendance, we did see a positive benefit of having a less expensive one-day wristband. Those were very popular on Saturday and Sunday, especially even Friday afternoon at the gates. Those folks who didn't want to commit ahead of time but then changed their mind or decided it was a beautiful weekend, they wanted to come, it was $10. And that's as inexpensive on the day of that people have been able to enter for years. Go ahead and go to the next one, Scott. So the outcome, food sales, while our attendance was 35% roughly of normal, our food sales were 70% from about 2019, which was great. Helped us on the income side. Our fundraising was better than it's ever been. We started the year losing about $15,000 or so in what had been regular sponsors and had to find new ones. And despite that challenge, the community was incredibly generous. That's individuals, businesses, corporations. That does not include grant revenue. And so we were very pleased about that, and it helped position the foundation to be able to support next year's festival even in a better way. Wristband sales to local businesses, those businesses who committed to making, to buy on behalf of their employees, or to buy and then share the cost with their employees. We had higher numbers in requests for those than we'd ever had before for that program. And until the state made the health code change, we were on track in the early sales, keeping in mind that in the first three weeks of wristband sales, it kind of goes like this. And then, at the end, the last two weeks, the last three weeks, about the time that the health guidelines changed, is when we see our biggest peak and we flatline. And so all indications leading into it were pretty good. As far as during the event, though, the other encouraging things that happened, we weren't sure how the public and children and volunteers would respond. But at our First Treasures tent, that's a place where kids that are aged four to 13 can buy art from $1 to $5. Artists either donate or ask for the $5 for maybe $100 piece that they've donated in that tent. And kids get to learn to be patrons. We have adults in our patron program now that 20 years ago started in First Treasures and are now saving money and being art patrons as adults, which is exactly what the program was designed to do. And art sales are really important for the health of the festival and for these 110 artists to be promoting our event around the country as they travel to other shows. So we had 450 kids come through that. That is on par, about a little lower than 19, but not much. So we felt good about the number of kids who could be served and the health and safety guidelines that were in place and their willingness to put up with that with us. Overall, there were a couple of incidents, Mayor. I know, I think through social media, we know there were some confrontations outside the park. But overall, the public seemed to stay distant, to be respectful of each other. We just didn't have a lot of problems, complaints, or issues related to what we were asking for people in our signage and in our expectations of where masks were recommended and in a couple of areas where they were required. And the new things that we did, some of those deposits that I talked about in 2020, those installations, including, this is the post-festival picture here, but in this picture, the artist helped us adapt some hardware that's new on the Tony's Pizza Event Center Bridge to include a PEX pipe colorful installation that protects the hardware that's on the bridge for next year's festival, avoids us having to tear it all down and put it back up. It was about six people, I think, six hours, seven hours or something to install. We're able to preserve that and have some color on the bridge year-round now. So with that, Scott. The bottom line is, the good news, with that annual budget over the two years and what would be, you know, a little over $1 million in total, both potential expenses and liabilities, we're reporting that it's just under $15,000 as a loss for those two years. And I think that puts us in remarkable shape for the year ahead. And I should be clear also, and we haven't tracked this as part of a festival budget, partly because of city accounting for labor. That loss doesn't include the time that parks put or that our staff puts in preparation of the event. We don't, we don't, the city doesn't bill Arts and Humanities for our time and ask us to pay that back. If we did ask the citizens to cover the total cost of the event, including our city time, then we'd be almost 40% to 50% higher. If we lost our volunteers, costs would double. So it makes a substantial difference to be able to have the professional services from staff. And we are excited about what 2022 has on the way with interest by artists and musicians. We're hearing that some bands, because of a desire to be back in public, and bands are finding that Spotify and Pandora don't pay quite as well as a live event, that they're really pushing a higher degree of live events than the past. So it may be a little bit more of a competitive field, but we feel we'll be prepared for that. So with that, and if it's okay with you, I'd like to move into the next portion. And then if you have questions, I'm trying to keep us on a schedule where there's plenty of time for questions about the festival or what else we go over, if that's okay.
That's great. Everybody all right? We're saving our questions for the end. Thank you very much.
Okay. We can go to the next one, Scott. The state of the arts is something that, you know, and Alana Jordan is here. Our office may have, years ago, made reports on an annual basis to the City Commission, but in my 11 years, we really haven't on what the impact of the arts are, why are we here, what is the value beyond quality of life, but beyond just having good entertainment or artistic programming or engagement for our citizens. There's far more that is involved with arts and being in a healthy community. And I thought this would be a good time to introduce that to you. And before we get into too much of it, I also, just on a personal note, I want to share a short note that came when Sharon Benson was our Arts Education Coordinator, before her passing. We did a summer program one year where kids came down, worked with an artist, and drew and sketched and reacted to sculpture to her. And at the end of that, Aaron, a young man in the fifth grade, wrote a brief note, and I think a little picture that was with it, but said, "Dear Ms. Benson, thank you for helping organize Arts Day Out. I had a lot of fun. Up until that day, I never met anyone that is similar to me. Sincerely, Aaron." If somebody asks, "What keeps you up at night? What do you think about?" I think about Aaron, and I think about the both. It's great that he found some art, but I was sad that he had to wait 10 years to find an artist or someone like him. And I think all of us that are here in the room are wanting to minimize the weight of Aarons all across Salina. And so keeping in mind that importance of giving folks identity and place and building that community is really important. Go ahead, Scott. And what I've already said here, I mean, in terms of academic performance, or physical and emotional health, or, you know, programming that is an economic driver, we're going to talk a little bit about the economic power of that. But again, beyond this assumption that arts are just for some people who can afford it and they don't serve the rest of the community, I think you're going to see in the next few minutes that that's not the case, that it's actually a huge impact across our community. Go ahead. And with that, we're going to take a look specifically at some of our cultural organizations here in town. These are not only the largest organizations in the community, but they also are, one thing they share in common is that they are a recipient of some form of public funding. Could be in-kind support, it could be cultural arts regional marketing through the transient guest tax. But they are the beneficiaries of that. And I thought it might be nice for you to hear from a few of them about the impact that they're making on community and get a little bit more specific and personal with each of those organizations. So with that, our first guest today is Lynda Henderson from the Rolling Hills Zoo. And so, Lynda.
Good afternoon. I'm Lynda Henderson. I'm the Director of Development and Marketing at Rolling Hills Zoo. And on behalf of the staff and the species of Rolling Hills Zoo, I want to thank you for the opportunity to visit with you about the importance of art and culture and what it does, its role in Salina. The mission of Rolling Hills Zoo is simple but impactful: touching hearts, igniting passion, and saving wildlife. When engaging a visitor during an animal encounter, hearts are touched and a passion is ignited to save wildlife. With each encounter, we have an opportunity to save wildlife for future generations. This is one of the greatest gifts we can give our children. For over 20 years, Rolling Hills Zoo has been a regional attraction, drawing over 80,000 guests each year. In fact, as of last Friday in 2021, 80,895 guests have passed through our iconic iron gates, coming from 19,944 zip codes. To put that in perspective, Kansas has 697 zip codes, which means in comparison, we have guests traveling from 20, from an additional 27 states outside of Kansas to visit the zoo. This makes for an incredible boost to Salina's tourism industry. While we continue to market regionally, our CARM grant funding has allowed us to reach beyond our regional area and outside of Kansas. By doing so, we are capturing visitors who will also enjoy many of Salina's other amenities: purchase gas, or even plan an extended stay in Salina. While current circumstances have not allowed us to survey our guests as we normally would, based off of our 2019 data, we know that 43% of our regional visitors are dining in area restaurants, 14 will stay overnight at a local hospitality venue, 27 will be shopping in Salina, 15% will add a special event or other local attraction in our community, and 19% will do something in our community in addition to those items listed above. We are proud supporters of our local partners, and we are always looking for marketing collaboratives whenever possible. This includes showcasing Salina's hotels on our website with links for easy bookings, or collaborating on a cultural events postcard that is mailed out to over 3,500 households outside of Salina region with the potential for overnight stays. Whenever possible, we include the Visit Salina and the Salina A&amp;E Events Calendar logos on our marketing as a way to entice people to explore all that Salina has to offer. Rolling Hills Zoo also believes in utilizing local as much as possible. We currently have 40 full-time employees, and when possible, we will hire an additional 40 seasonal employees each year. We spend over $4 million each year on goods and services, with the majority of those expenditures recirculating in our local economy. On November 12th, Rolling Hills Zoo will be breaking ground on a new era with the construction of a new habitat, the Pride of the Prairie. This new habitat will encompass nearly 20,000 feet, square feet, and will feature a personal 180-degree lion viewing area inside a massive cave. There, guests will experience being directly underneath a 450-pound lion, or coming nose-to-nose with her at one of the windows within the cave. A special training window inside the cave will also allow our guests to be just feet away as animal care staff safely perform daily husbandry with the lions, all part of the exemplary care given to each animal of the zoo. With the opening of our new African lion habitat next spring, we will also be revamping our billboards that are strategically located along I-70 and I-135 border-to-border, inviting travelers to discover the Pride of the Prairie, in the heart of Kansas and within a heartbeat of Salina. TripAdvisor, one of the leading travel organizations, ranks Rolling Hills Zoo as number-one things-to-do in Salina, and we have been the recipient of the Traveler's Choice Award for five years running. Now, don't let me do all the talking. Let's hear from our guests, who recently posted the following comments on Google Review. "This is by far the best zoo in central Kansas. All of their exhibits host healthy and active animals. I love their tiger exhibit, as they look young and healthy. The price is also quite reasonable, and I would recommend this zoo to anyone." "We traveled from Houston, Texas, to Kansas and looked for a place to go out and explore. We love the things they have here. Really nice zoo. We had a wonderful time." "I really liked this zoo. Greatly surpassed my expectations. Visited on the way home after just visiting the Cheyenne Mountain Zoo, and I was impressed. The museum walk-through was also great and really well-done. Walking through the entrance, I could see this zoo is well-maintained and cared for." "In closing, I want to thank you and I want to invite you and your families to join us on Friday, November 12th, at 3:00 p.m., as we break ground on a new era at Rolling Hills Zoo with our new Pride of the Prairie habitat. I also want to thank you for your role in making arts and culture a priority in Salina, and by doing so, you are positively impacting the lives of those in our communities. Thank you."
Thank you very much, Ms. Henderson. That's just incredible. Thank you for sharing those statistics and things. Really appreciate it.
Misty Serene from the Salina Art Center is next.
Hello. Thank you for having us today. I am Misty Serene. I'm the Executive Director of Salina Art Center. We are very grateful for the support that we get from the City of Salina, primarily through Parks and Recreation and Arts and Humanities. One of the things I think I am most proud of and that I want to point out is that the Salina Art Center has been here for many years. In fact, so many years that we are now very proudly boasting that many of our Salina business leaders, some of the brightest in our community, coming up through Leadership Salina, serving on commissions, serving on boards, grew up as Art Center kids. Many of them, including members of our own board, are able to come back to us and talk to about how they remember taking classes at the Art Center. They grew up here, they've come back here, and I am proud to think that we had some sort of role in really developing those thinkers and doers that came back and are giving so much to our community. Art does more than just create artists. None of the people that I just mentioned grew up to become artists. Instead, they are bankers, financial managers, manufacturers. And they are the ones that are contributing to our community. One of my favorite quotes is by Victor Pinchuk, and he says that "art, freedom, and creativity will change society faster than politics." And I 100% believe that. I have the unique opportunity to come to the Art Center, not as an artist or a creator, but as a business development professional. So I'm able to look at the mission of the Art Center every day and say, what is it giving to its community? Is it creating a product that is valuable and necessary? So beyond the thousands of people who visit the Art Center galleries each year, we also provide art education for hundreds of children and adults. One of the great things that we've been able to add to the Art Center curriculum this year is a ceramics program that has just birthed itself in the last few weeks, thanks to a donation from the City of Salina. We took over your ceramics equipment out of Memorial Hall and have moved it into the warehouse, where we now are boasting private ceramic lessons to get us started. And in the spring, we'll host art lessons literally for people pre-K through adulthood, which is something that even the city was not able to do in the facility that they had. So we're able to take what we're given and turn it into something more. Art education, according to neuroscientists, is one of the most important things when it comes to healthy brain development at every stage of life. This has become even more relevant to many of our adult learners who are now taking adult art lessons. I think 100% of our community responded in a recent marketing survey that they understood that the Art Center provided classes for kids, but not all of them understood that we provided art classes for adults. And that is extremely important to ongoing cognitive retention, memory, their ability to think, innovate, and sort of stay on track and keep a healthy brain throughout life. We are able to provide all of our services at the gallery, so 100% free admission. This ensures that we're able to attract a diverse audience from everywhere. No one has ever denied service at the Art Center, even for applying to classes, thanks to partnership we have with Parks and Rec. And with many of our private donors, we have multiple scholarship opportunities available. So no one has ever turned away from an Art Center activity for a lack of ability to pay. This ensures, like I said, that 100% of the community can be involved with anything that the Art Center does. Some of the support that we receive from the City of Salina includes in-kind support. So what we receive are custodial services, HVAC support, and those types of things at our Santa Fe facility. Not all three facilities, so the cinema and the warehouse are on their own, but at the Santa Fe facility, we do receive custodial support and HVAC support, which we are grateful for. I would, however, be remiss if I did not mention that in the last three years, we have lost $25,000 in support from the city through grants through Arts and Humanities and through Parks and Rec for summer art programming. One of the things that we lost, which isn't included in that $25,000, is a hard copy mailer that Parks and Rec did to every household in Salina. Now, this may seem like a very small thing. It's actually a very expensive thing, so I understand why it perhaps has been left off the budget the last year. However, it is one of the primary communication pieces you have for telling every single household in Salina about what is available for programming for kids in our community. And the Art Center was fortunate to be part of that. And what we noticed this past year without it is that we still brought in a few new people, but new first-time Art Center class takers was a much smaller percentage than it had been in the years before. And part of that, in our opinion, is because not 100% of people receive Art Center communications directly. So I would encourage you to revisit that with your Parks and Recreation folks and see if you can't get that mailing back into their households. We also do things like science on screen, where we are supported by a grant from the Sloan Foundation, but also in partnership with USD 305, where we're now incorporating scientific language into both going to the movies, but also into our art classes, so that kids particularly who are exposed to scientific concepts, including things like physics concepts and vocabulary, as they're exposed to those things through their art classes, they tend to go into classrooms, academic classrooms, feeling much more confident because they are familiar, and so they do better academically. because they are familiar, and so they do better academically. So with all of the things that the Arts Center does, again, I just want to thank you for being supportive, for continuing to be supportive of arts, not only as a quality-of-life issue, but as an economic driver for our community and as a strong employer for a good percentage of people in Saline County. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Serene.
Next, you're going to hear from Michael Spicer, Executive Director of the Salina Community
Good afternoon, everyone. I had a really swell page of information to share with you, and then as I increased it from 11 points to 14, I picked it up off the printer and it had dumped half the information. So bear with me on this. I'm Michael Spicer. I've been the Executive Director of Salina Community Theater for the past 24 years. I had a meeting with the President of the Chamber of Commerce and the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce, and when I have these meetings, I am reminded not so much of the things you already know about Salina Community Theater, but about the things that people don't know about Salina Community Theater, and that's what I'd like to share with you today. We realize that you understand that this is one of the most important cultural assets in the community now, celebrating its 61st consecutive year of production. But the things you might not realize are that we create everything it takes to create the live theater that we do. The sets, the costumes, the properties, the lighting equipment, all of that happens in-house. None of that comes in. All of the marketing material that we have to create has to be created in-house because it has to be unique to our production. All of this has to be compressed into a concise time period. We cannot go to an audience on opening night and say, can you folks come back next week? We're not quite ready. So we're on an absolute critical time deadline. We introduce 4,000 young people from local schools to live theater in our fall and spring shows. We recently did Honk Junior. We had more than 2,000 young people come in to see that show. We have to pay for the busing to bring them in, but we know that the residual value of having them in our space and seeing a performance fully fleshed out with young people performing for young people has great resonant value for the community theater as well as to the community. More than 450 volunteers donate more than 66,000 hours a year to help create the live theater that we present to people from not only almost every zip code in Kansas, but every surrounding state. We have subscribers in Wichita and Kansas City. We have people coming from Denver and Omaha on a regular basis to see the shows that we We are an economic engine for downtown. We are fortunate in that we are able to earn 76% of what it takes to operate Salina Community Theater, which puts us about 16 points ahead of live theater throughout the rest of the country. Many theaters are not even fortunate enough to be able to earn 60%, but we are able to earn 76% of what it takes to operate. What that means is that we are able to infuse between $850,000 and $1 million a year into the local economy directly. And that's apart from the people who go to eat, or buy gas, or stay overnight, or shop. So we feel that the fact that we are such a driver of economics is critically important not only to the payback, the investment that everybody makes in Salina Community Theater, because it's... That kind of investment, if you could invest $40,000 and somebody gave you $850,000 at the end of the year, you would make that investment. Just to go back again to the more human part of it, before the pandemic, we had more than 350 student registrations in our educational classes. In the last 18 months, that dropped down, but it only dropped down to about 275, so we were incredibly encouraged that our efforts to stay open and stay safe were rewarded by people coming back, students from K through adult. This year, we are back very close to 350-plus registrations in our educational classes in dance and vocal performance and acting. One final thing, about two years ago, PlayBill.com, if you go to New York and you go to see a Broadway show, you get a playbill. That company did a survey of the 10 conservatory programs throughout the country with the most representation on Broadway in casts. Salina Community Theater had students at six of those 10 conservatories nationally. But more important than those students at those six conservatory organizations are the 7,000 to 8,000 young people that come to see stuff at Salina Community Theater on an annual basis across all programs. That's what I have to say to you. Thank you so much for your support of Salina Community Theater. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Spicer. It's hard to believe it's 24 years.
Our next presenter is not Adrian Allen, but our Board Chair, Gabe Grant.
She jumped in a car at noon to go pick up a guest artist in Kansas City who missed their connecting flight to Salina today. So you're stuck with the B-team, unfortunately. The mission of the Salina Symphony is to enrich lives through artistic music performance and education, and we do this in a few different ways. Obviously, what is most well-known is our sixth concert season gala, patriotic concert every June in conjunction with the Eisenhower Museum in Abilene, and then special events throughout the season as well. We're getting ready to enter a new season, or a new era, of the Salina Symphony with a music director search that officially kicked off a few weeks ago. We are welcoming five guest conductor finalists to the Salina community this season. Each is presenting a concert and auditioning for the job of our new music director and conductor. We anticipate that director to be named in May. That process started about 21 months ago with over 100 applications from across the country and several other countries throwing their name in the hat. A great pool of candidates and a fantastic season that we're looking forward to this year. If you missed the concert three weeks ago, please don't miss the concert in two weeks. It was a great time. Also, through the Salina Symphony, youth education is a big part of what we do. There are four different ensembles, the Youth Symphony, Junior Youth Symphony, a preparatory orchestra, and Youth Choir. Traditionally, those four ensembles serve about 200 students from 30 different schools, and the support of our patrons and donors helps us subsidize about 25% of those students on some sort of scholarship to make attending our program available to their families. The Symphony is a huge quality-of-life driver for the Salina community, both as a performance opportunity for musicians considering Salina as a home, and then for our Youth Symphony participants and families considering Salina. The economic impact of the Salina Symphony, we invest the majority of our budget back into the community through paying our staff, the artists that participate in our performances, and contractors for their work as well through local businesses. 50% of our single-ticket audience drives in from outside of the Salina community. CARM funding has been a great driver in helping us increase those single-ticket and regional audiences over the past number of years. Adrian got me a few quotes here, both from a musician, a Youth Symphony student, and a patron. First, from Kyle Hopkins, our principal horn player. "The Salina Symphony is my principal outlet for musical expression. It gives me a sense of belonging, belonging to a community, and belonging to a wider musical world. It enriches my life." From Hannah Rose North, a Youth Symphony member. "What I love most about the Youth Symphony is the people, the music, and the opportunity it gives me to push myself and to grow as a musician. It's been a big part of my life, and I wouldn't have some of my friends and skills without it." And finally, from Katie Hoffner, Salina Symphony patron and passport president. "The Salina Symphony is one of the cornerstones of our community. The Symphony connects us from generation to generation while providing an opportunity to listen to inspiring music. It provides a time to be with longtime friends and to make new friends. It's what sustains us, yet what changes us." Thank you for your support of the Salina Symphony.
Thank you very much, Mr. Grant. We'll be happy to report to Ms. Allen that you acquitted the symphony very, very well.
And I'm going to... Next is actually Jane Gates with the Stiefel Theater.
Hi, you guys. Executive Director of the Stiefel Theater for 15 years. I came to Salina 32 years ago, I think, and came on a Saturday, went to Presbyterian Church on Sunday where I met Martha Ray. She had me to Arts and Humanities Commission the next day. Worked for the River Festival, contracted employee to do graphic design and branding with Lana and Martha and everybody there, Sharon. Martha ended up at the Stiefel, fast forward like 18 years later, asked me to come over, needed something by 4 o'clock. I couldn't charge anything. Started in helping there with Michelle Clark, who got hired. At one point, about three years later, she said to me, you need to run the Stiefel. I swear to God, the thought had never crossed my mind. But I came out of the tradition of the festival here and this cultural community, and I think that's... I want to talk about the Stiefel, but I also wanted to say that I came from Fort Collins, which, growing up there, it was the fastest-growing city in the country. And when I got here, and for the last 30 years, I've been working in the arts in this community. Our kids grew up in the arts. For many years, I was a docent at the Arts Center and very involved in the festival all these years. Well, the work I'm doing at the Stiefel now, which feels to me like just a great joy, I've been able to meet so many people running theaters in other parts of the country, agents that book shows all over the country. It's really amazing how this job I have now is really not defined by a geographical location, but it's more communities of people working in the arts. A couple years ago, in fact, I was also invited to be a board member for Mid-America Arts Alliance, and it was clear at that time, it was in recognition of what's happened out in this community in the arts. Having, you know, come from Fort Collins, my sister just ran for mayor there last year. Their tagline there is "Beer, Bikes, and Brews." And I'm not exaggerating when I tell you, I have never seen a community now that has a cultural life as strong as this one. And I think it's kind of fascinating, in a way, that we haven't done more branding as a community to really claim that and talk about that. Now, there's been support that has come from the city for all of our organizations in different ways, shapes, and forms. As you know, the city was behind the original renovation of the Stiefel Theater. And certainly now that we received the funding that was the redirected funding, we didn't get any tax dollars, but we did get $2 million that was raised for the Starbarn funding. All of that is coming through the city and working with Deb. It's been fantastic, as you guys know, when you had the tour. It's just a remarkable thing, what we have in this community. And I think going forward, as we're getting into the kids now involved in our organizations that grew up in this community, that we should really be thinking as a city about how can we make sure these organizations have what they need, have the funding that they need. The economic impact is enormous of our organizations. I know that the Stiefel American for the Arts statistic is that over $3 million comes into this community as a result of the 38,000 or so thousand people that come to shows at the Stiefel every year. We're truly a venue now that is attracting the top tours in the country, and it's not only... It's a benefit that we're located where we are for the Stiefel. You know, these tours, they don't care that you're in a small town in the middle of Kansas. They like it that you're on I-70 and I-35. So 70% of our audiences are regional. Our largest donor coming during COVID came from Denver, actually. Some of the new things that you might not know about is we do around 35, 40 shows a year. Thanks to the funding that we got, though, to make our building stronger and because we were able to buy a sound system, I believe that will enable us to do a little more of the programming that's hard to pay for itself. I think you all know that our formula at the Stiefel is that we're an independent venue. Our shows break even, basically, and we fundraise for our overhead. We received shuttered venue grant funding through the SBA, and an interesting thing is it appears we're getting more because the SBA originally set aside $16 billion to support independent venues. When COVID hit, we were closed for 16 months, and 90% of independent venues like the Stiefel were forecasted to close. So the shuttered venue grant came through the SBA. We received a great grant, and I believe we're getting more because they only gave away $10 billion of the $16 billion that was allocated. So that's really good news. Another thing that came out of COVID for us is that we're going to start a music school in early 2022. I have Matt Gary, who's on our board, is managing that, a local teacher. Cash Hollister is helping. We're going to start with offering around six or so music classes to local students. We also will be doing summer workshops, and everything kind of came together. We were very close to Mike Finnegan and his wife Candy. The music school is now named after Mike Finnegan, and many of his good friends have kind of stepped forward, want to support this school, and even some of them plan to come out and do workshops for us in the summer. So that's something exciting that we'll be announcing now. We also intend to start doing more, like smaller shows with local and regional artists in the Watson Room going forward. So I just want to say, very grateful and humbled to be a part of this community and sit in this position here. And just think about, like, I think we all need to think about the branding of this community and really claiming the arts and how important they are here.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gates.
Thank you, Jane. Susan is not available from the Smoky Hill Museum. I put the museum on the list. As you well know, they're, you know, supported by you, by the taxpayers, as part of the general fund. But in terms of the total summary numbers that I gave you, it included both their $582,000 a year budget for their professional staff and programming, but also it included the 35,000 people served through that free institution. Many museums of this quality and size in the country would require an admission or strongly suggest a donation in order to enter the gates, and we are pleased to see a diverse population of citizens who want to know more about Salina, Saline County history, and some of the universal stories that only a museum can tell. And I think the staff has done a remarkable job in how they have both programmed, the interest that they have generated through their first Thursday talks. And currently, in the entry gallery or in the atrium coming in, is a first traveling exhibit that will be available both state and regionally for museums, libraries, schools, and others to rent. It's been beautifully designed as an adaptation from the show they did a couple of years ago on World War I in the trenches. And so this micro-exhibit that can fit in a minivan will start spreading the reach of the museum beyond Salina, and those are designed to recover costs and staff time to transport that there and extend the impact of Salina. I should say, before we move on to the next, just to remind commissioners, and I don't know if this is a good thing or not in your mind... know if this is a good thing or not in your mind, but the city of Salina, we heard a number of the cultural directors say how unique and strong programming and cultural services are here. I, I need you to know what, how unique that is. The state of Kansas has two Departments of Arts and Culture as part of city government that are fully funded by city government. Some have a line item through Parks and Rec, or they have money that's given to a private 501(c)(3) that manages on that behalf. But, and, and some, some municipalities might manage multiple venues, an art center or a theater or something. But, but having a collective voice of both advocacy, support, and, and building a, a strong cultural community as part of city government is rare and unique, and it's less than 20% of the arts agencies in the country. And so, Salina is looked at regionally and nationally as a leader in the quality of programming and services that are offered. And, and I will say, because I'm not the one that produced the programs and designed the things that you just heard about from the folks behind me, I often tell people, I think we function like a town of about 150,000 in terms of the cultural quality of programs and services that are offered. And we certainly appeal to a much wider audience from those numbers that you saw. Just these five presenters and, and the museum, 113,382 visitors from outside of Celine County in a year. That was not 2019 numbers. That's substantial. So, with that, Scott, we can go on to the next slide. Get in the weeds here a minute, or just as a reminder, you heard a number of people talk about economic impact. You've seen these numbers and this slide in your packet. The illustration that I found very helpful the first time I saw this report was that if you wanted to say, "Okay, well, how big is that? What does that mean?" You know, when you say $804 billion or 4.3 of the GDP, what does that really mean? The number of people working in the arts across the country, and, and Salina holds its own in terms of percentage of those. We're not, you know, you're not saying, "Well, yeah, that's New York, but we're Salina." We fall in line with, with the percentage of these. It would be like lifting all of the accountants out of your economy, or all of the police services. The number of policemen, the budgets, the, the impact of, of that group and of accountant, accountants locally is about the same. It's a substantial number. It, it's not a periphery. It's not a few people out on the edge. It is, it's a substantial difference. Go ahead, Scott. I already hit that. You can go to the next one. There were a couple of references in terms of the spending. These folks coming from out of town spend quite a bit of money, and the ones in town. When we talk about the economic impact of the arts on, on wallets and, and a positive benefit back to the community and sales tax, you know, money spent for childcare, ground transportation, retail, clothing and accessories and gifts and other fun stuff, if they're coming to the Stiefel or the community theater or the symphony, stopping in a restaurant. The, the additional spending per person, the average from both out-of-county and in-town is $31.47. That has slightly gone down since, obviously, since 2019. It's gone down a lot. But, but those numbers are still substantial. And I want to remind you, I, I mentioned these numbers being reputable. Salina participated in this national study 15 years ago. And, and our numbers were comparable, and I've looked at each five years that they do this latest report to make sure and, and ask our, our other local culturals, you know, what kind of out-of, out-of-county experiences are, or visitors are you seeing? And the CAMR reporting helps us with that as well. It's a substantial number in terms of the overall economic impact beyond the 8.85 million a year that these six organizations have, in addition to the others who aren't here today. Go ahead, Scott. The local versus non-local, this gives you a, a better idea of what that is. And it's just a, an additional piece for you to have in your toolbox. Go ahead. With that, I'm gonna pause for a minute because I think Commissioner Hoppick likes it when I don't talk. And we have a couple of other guests here today that I'd like to give a second to talk about the, the impact of, of arts with our business community and not just from the arts community. Linda Salem is the CEO at Great Plains Manufacturing. It's a pleasure to have her on the Arts and Humanities Foundation Board the last couple of years, but she'll be speaking more broadly than just arts and humanities. Linda?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for your time today. First, I'm gonna start out, Monty White wanted to be here and could not, so he asked me to read a letter to you. So, I will start with Monty's thoughts. Monty is, of course, with McShares and Repco. Dear City Commission, thank you for supporting the many arts and cultural events that Salina has to offer. It is important to have quality of life opportunities in any city, and even more so in a city that is trying to retain its residents and encourage people and businesses to move to Salina. I am grateful for the many different arts and entertainment venues that are supported in our community. Our family has benefited from all the options. Our children have taken art classes, dance classes, theater acting, music, and especially have participated in the River Festival from start to finish every year. This activity has helped them socially and educationally, and we believe this has helped them in school as well. I would also speak from our business, McShares Inc/Repco, which is celebrating its 75th year this year, has had many employees in the past as well as today that are passionate about the arts and are having outlets to enrich their lives. We always share the many opportunities a city has to offer when bringing in new recruits from all over the country. It not only helps us attract people here, but helps us retain them once they are here. Our business invests, and we personally invest in the arts in Salina, as it is so important to a thriving community. The downtown project looks fantastic, and the river project will further improve the look of our town. Continuing to invest in the arts will provide our city, businesses, and its residents opportunities for quality of life, economic opportunities, and creative outlets for the future. Best regards, Monty White. My thoughts these days are filled quite a bit with recruiting people. And when I tell the story of Salina, I have to keep in mind that we aren't graced with some of what people think are God's best arts. We don't have beaches, and we don't have mountains. Kansas has a quiet beauty, but it is sometimes an acquired beauty that people don't recognize just immediately. So, we have to create our own. And I think this community has done a fantastic job of that. The public-private partnership that goes into the arts here is truly extraordinary. You know, visually, when we bring recruits here, downtown, the $160 million renovation, the, the sculpture tour, the big new mural speaks to the commitment to the arts visually in Salina. And we tout that a great deal. We tell people that we are what we create here in Salina. If you move here, it's the community you create that makes it special. Your friends are what you do for entertainment, your sports, your family, and the arts community is such an important part of that. Our employees do care quite a bit about the arts, and people who are moving here absolutely do. Most of them are bringing children with them, and they want to know that their children are going to have as broad a cultural experience as possible. And the schools do a good job for what the schools do, but without the community we support, it is really not that well-rounded. But with this community support is an astounding story for a community of this size. You know, when I look at the list of what the city supports, the Rolling Hill Zoo, the Salina Arts Center, the Salina Community Theater, Salina Symphony, Stiefel Theater, the Smoky Hill Museum, those are things that we can show to anyone who's interested, and we are interested in bringing to Salina, and show them off with pride and show what quality, what quality products they, they are. From a personal perspective, and I gotta put that hat on, my children participated in every one of those things deeply. And Michael Spicer will know that my children pretty much lived at Salina Community Theater. And they are enriched beyond that. Now, do they live here in Salina? No. However, my young son, who's at NYU Tisch and getting a, a thorough education in theater, plans to go out into the world and do many things. But when I look at him and say, "Hey, would you come back to Salina someday?" He goes, "You know I would if I could run Salina Community Theater." So, Michael, look out, buddy, but you got a few years. But, so the arts and the children we export many times come back to continue to enrich the community. So, thank you for your support. I encourage you to continue to do so, and it makes me proud to be part of the Salina community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Salem, and thank you for your support of, of the arts and for lining up our next community theater director, all in one fell swoop.
Well, as, as a little bit of an aside with that, and, and as Linda talked about the importance of cultural life in recruitment and retention of employees, I did leave on your, your stage that Arts Infusion Guide, Saline Arts and Humanities through generous sponsorship or, or co-sponsorship of the festival, is able to get some help from Consolidated Printing in, in covering some costs for this. We print about this year 800 extra copies of this, and we share it with HR directors, with hospital physician and, and medical professional recruiting, with the HR directors at, at some of the larger companies that are wanting to recruit, and frankly, anybody who, who would like one. We distribute these around town, not only to talk about arts and humanities education programming, but also what the rest of our cultural partners here do in adult and children's arts education beyond the classroom. And there's plenty of, of evidence and, and the, and the research and the stats that we reported that talk about the importance of that and the value that our community places on it. So, I want you to know that we do serve not just as a programmer, but also as an important partner, as do these entities who, who have been very generous with their time, with tours, with tickets, with, with, with access to their facilities for those special times where we need to recruit additional professionals to our community. And with, with that, I do, we have just a little bit of time for one additional folk, person who's here. Travis, do you, Travis Young is here to share a little bit of his perspective as well.
Thank you, Brad. Good afternoon. Yeah, I'm Travis Young. I'm the CEO and President of Salina Vortex Corporation. We've been in Salina since 1977. We were founded here. We're a family business. We, we employ about 380 people locally, and we could probably employ 450 if we could at the moment. But it's busy times for us, but it's a, it's good problems to have. I would say, you know, companies like Vortex, as well as Great Plains, Kubota, and McShares, Repco, you know, we, we contribute a lot to this, this economy. We bring dollars and money, euros, from all around the world, and it comes here. It doesn't go out of this community. We invest back into the community, and we really need a healthy, strong arts community here for the same reasons. Quality of life. I'm an implant, actually. I was born here, but I spent most of my life outside of Salina. We just recently moved back four years ago. And there was a bit of anxiety from my family, from my wife, "Oh, my gosh, what are we gonna do in Salina?" Seeing what's happened in Salina, the investment and in the arts, as well as the infrastructure, and also some of our sports activities and this sort of thing, really allows companies like us to retain and recruit talent. And without that, you know, honestly, a couple of years ago, we were talking about, what do we do? Do we, we have to expand our operations. Do we expand it in Salina? Are we able to attract, recruit people here, or, or do we need to look at another place in order to find the right talent employees that we needed? Well, the transformation and what's going on and all the momentum that's happening right now in this town is just absolutely unbelievable. And I'm, I'm also involved a lot with these, these cultural institutions, and they're doing such great things. There's a lot of cooperation that's going on at the moment, and this momentum, everybody's starting to capture that. So, I'm, I'm very excited. So, we doubled down on Salina. We're under contract to purchase a 76,000-square-foot facility here in town, and we're gonna stay in Salina because of what we have here. So, I, I, I say the arts is a significant part of that for all the reasons Monty shared that, as well as Linda. It's, it's very important to our businesses to have a healthy, vibrant community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I'd be remiss if I didn't thank you too for your, the recent project, the mural at the Mills. It's, you had extraordinary vision, and thanks to the generosity of the Vaneira family, I'm so excited to see that come to life. It's, it's an incredible addition to our community. So, thank you very much.
I, I think that'll be the first of many more, and we're gonna have reason to continue to be excited as, as the private sector does that. And what a great position for me to be able to come to work and have Travis and his friends getting painting done. It just spreads the load and, and helps engage our, our community in, in new and exciting ways that are beyond our capacity. So, it, it's exciting when that happens. Scott, the next slide. We're gonna go through some of these pretty quickly. You have this information in your packet, and it was distributed to citizens. So, if they want to get online and take a look at the study session packet, a lot of this is a repetition of what is, is reputable resources from Americans for the Arts on what Americans believe about the arts and, and why it's important to support. Things like education, you know, when, when nearly 90% of our country, whether they're involved in the arts personally or not, 90% across geographic, demographic, social, racial, ethnic, income lines, say, "Education in the arts is important, both in school and out." That should be able to give you confidence, as commissioners, of knowing, hey, anytime we see an opportunity to support and/or to, to encourage arts and education in our community, you're not alone. Go ahead and go to the next one. The 89% talking about it outside of schools. Those are strong encouragers for us and, and direct us for, for what, what we do each day. Go ahead, Scott. Creativity in the workplace. We've heard often, no matter what the job is, a lot of, of CEOs, business owners are saying, "We're looking for creative problem solvers in our workplace. Somebody who can adapt, who can pivot, can, can, can adjust to change." And the arts teach that. Yep, there, it's, it, whether it's the theater, the visual arts or the musical arts, when you're presented with a problem in a creative environment, there are countless ways to do that one thing right. Our taste allows us to each do that differently, but what that teaches our workers and, and our patrons and others who experience the arts is, hey, there are creative ways of solving problems and of engaging with our community that, that the arts help inspire and lead. And there are many professions that only think there's one way to do things right, and I think it's important that we keep that in mind. Go ahead. Obviously, the image, the pride, the identity of our communities. Watching people interact with Sculpture Tour Salina, again, a, a private organization, a private group of, of individuals who do that. You've made a commitment each year for, through the people's choice to purchase work, but to have that entire program happen through the generosity and the volunteering and the in-kind support and the private donations that allow that to happen has been transformational for our community and the engagement that citizens have with, with art in, in public space. And I think it's helped inspire groups like Travis and, and others who say, "Hey, this is great, and we can do more." And, and let's continue to let the creative energy that's happening inside the walls of these venues be reflected on the outside. And we are starting to look like that community now, and it's exciting. Go ahead. In healing and in healthcare, there is a lot that's been done in research since 2013 on arts and healing. 50% of the hospitals in, in the United States involve creative acts and arts in their healing processes. It might be training and, and helping reduce stress for their employees, but, but there have been measurable benefits of reducing hospital stays, reducing pain management, medication, and, and, and increasing the mental attitudes of those the mental attitudes of those patients when creativity is engaged in the healthcare industry. And this is just taking off. It's also the same, go ahead, Scott, with the military. There have been recent efforts through Americans for the Arts and others to say, you know, of 40 different interventions for our military personnel who are suffering physically and/or emotional damage from their service. Number four of the top 40 things that they can do for intervention is arts. Theater, music, and creative acts. Everything from shredding a uniform and making paper out of a uniform that was one former skin to be a new message and a new form, to performing on a stage or creating a theater group. There's just been some beautiful things that are happening with the arts there. Impact of COVID, I think Jane mentioned a little bit about that, too. Arts industry is going to be slower to recover than some of the retail and the other sector. How our public is spending their disposable income, their willingness to go back out in the public and to engage is going to change geographically. But if we look at that third bullet, 17% of normal in April of '21, 38% as of the end of September, projected to be in the 60-some percent. But when you look at between Michael's reporting, Jane's reporting, you know, earned income is between 60 and 80% of the revenues necessary for these agencies to function, to produce the quality programs that they have. And when we see audience participation still low, it's challenging for everyone, and I think it's important to keep that in mind. Go ahead. I'm going to borrow a line, and it's easier to share this with Mike, not here today, because it's Jason's quote. But Jason told me one day in a performance evaluation, he said, you know, your main job, your job is to just make the arts unavoidable in this town. And I told him then, I was going to take that statement, I was going to own it, and I would give him credit when I said it publicly. But that is our role, and just a quick reminder, highlights of some of the other programs and services that Salina Arts and Humanities offers. We have just, I think, one of our staff members here today, Joan Benefield, Wave Joan, she's our visual arts specialist. She handles the Public Art Program, all of the visual arts related to the Smoky Hill River Festival, and is also a resource partner for a Leadership Salina class that has an interest in putting some murals downtown on the new stages and some other areas. So, she's been a great resource to work with the community for that. Go ahead. And I think, you know, in summary, you know, I may be preaching to the choir here, you know, it's good for the economy, it's good for workforce development, the arts are great to build community pride and engagement. And the community wants opportunities to express their own creativity. Over half of America is involved in some kind of creative act, singing in a choir, writing, performing, doing crafts at home. We have a large number of our citizens who are engaged, and even a higher number, if they're not participating, still believe in the importance of it. And then, if this hasn't been made clear, the arts define Salina, help define Salina as a unique place, as one that's special to live and to work and to return to or to stay, and we hope to continue to serve in that capacity. Go ahead. I think that's it. Now, well, yeah, we're right at quarter till. I'm sure that if you had specific questions, either for me or for some of the others that you've heard from, or if you want to look at anything that's in the packet and say, what exactly does this mean? What's the impact for Salina? Be happy to do my best to answer that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson. Have we got any questions for Mr. Anderson or any of the cultural entities that are here today to present?
Just one, is this on? Other than the Stiefel Theater, is there a way to gauge how many folks leave their house solely to come here for an art? I guess the community theater might be one where you could more easily track that.
You know, I think when we do our next cultural plan, those are some questions that we'll be ready to ask now that we've kind of built a cultural arts regional marketing and we have a better knowledge. For instance, when cultural arts regional marketing started, we set some boundaries, you know, of saying, oh, it has to be 100 miles or further, or it has to be 60 miles or further for certain reimbursements of those programs. What we found in the survey work through the Stiefel Community Theater and elsewhere, people a lot closer than that are coming, getting a ticket, and staying overnight, as close as Concordia or Manhattan or Newton, and making a weekend of it. But we haven't done that kind of specific research, and we'll probably wait until we're fully out of the pandemic to fund something like that so that we have an accurate idea of what that impact is. I'd like to have Salina participate in the next Arts and Economic Prosperity Survey in conjunction with our next cultural plan, if possible.
Any other questions?
I just have a quick question. And this is going back to the River Festival, but as we approach the '22 festival, what have you learned this year, or what do you keep in mind, or how do you approach the festival, knowing we may be in a better position with the pandemic? We may be in a worse position. It's kind of a broad question, but I just wanted your feedback on that.
In a nutshell, what we're preparing for, first of all, during the festival this year, on breakdown, I said, save all the COVID signage. We have every reason to believe that there will be some kind of restriction or health concern. It's not going to go away between now and June. The trends that we're seeing is that, and the fact that we were able to gather 35,000 people, or 24,000 people in the park over the four days without an attributed outbreak or hotspot shows that the outdoor events have at least a greater likelihood of safety and ease of scheduling. We're going to continue to be careful, as we did going into '21, of being careful what contracts we generate and the language that we have in some of those agreements. We have COVID language as part of the contracts that we used for this year that gave us really up until about mid-July to pull the plug or not. Without a significant financial hardship, we'll keep those in place going forward, knowing that what the next 60 days, let alone the next six months, are going to look like, we have to be cautious.
Right.
I don't have a question as much as I have a comment. From raising three children here and now having three grandchildren here, I've always been a believer that there has to be something for the youth to do. And we have the obvious, when we look at the fieldhouse and the money we're going to spend to update Bill Burke and the soccer fields and the tennis courts. But I think one of the things that's hidden is the activities we have for youth that you don't think about. I see youth volunteering at Rolling Hills. You have the Youth Symphony. You now have the classes that take place at the community theater. So, I think if an individual's bringing a family here, we are so well-rounded as the options that we have for the youth, that I think another community of 50,000 would sure have a hard time finding the various opportunities for youth here. And for all those here in the room, I thank you because those are options and activities that don't happen in every community.
Well, I've had the privilege of, when I interviewed with Jason, he asked at the end of the interview, is there any questions you have for us? And I said, well, I'm leaving a tenured position that's secure, that I could spend the rest of my life in for something that is a little more, at will, a little more risky. But I said, I need you to know in advance that I believe the arts and their impact on community are every bit as important as our roads and as our water and as our police and fire and the other essential services that we offer. Because if you take that away, if you take everything you just heard away from Salina and then say, and why would I come here? It'd be a hard sell. And so, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be able to provide those services and to be a part of that, and for the support that you've provided to allow us to be the great city we are.
I just want to piggyback something. Everyone talks about this being a great place to raise your kids, but the very thing you just mentioned makes it a great place for people to stay here after they retire.
Absolutely. It is. It's for both. And if you look at these Americans for the Arts numbers and expectations of what people are looking for in value in their communities, you are, when you support and side with the arts, you're with the majority.
Thank you. And I would again like to thank the representatives, Ms. Henderson from Rolling Hills Zoo, Ms. Serene from the Arts Center. I see that Ms. Bishop from Salina Downtown Incorporated has kind of snuck in and stayed at the back, but we do recognize the partnership that you bring to all these arts opportunities. Mr. Spicer from the Community Theater, and Mr. Grant from the Salina Symphony. And I'm sorry that Ms. Hawxworth couldn't be here today, but I'm glad that you and Ms. Benefield were here. And Ms. Gates from the Stiefel, and again, Ms. Salem and Mr. Young. It truly takes a village, and it's wonderful to see everyone come together and build up the kind of arts organizations that we have in our community. And so, thank you all for taking time to be here. Thanks to Visit Salina for promoting these events and for helping us keep track of their economic impact in the community. And I would open it up at this time, we do have a couple minutes. If there are any members of the public who would like to speak or who have any questions, now would be the time to do that.
Thank you for having this discussion. The Soderberg family has had an ongoing relationship with the Salina Arts Center since its inception 43 years ago. This may seem unusual, but I can name others who have valued the Arts Center over many years like we have. Our children and grandchildren have taken many Arts Center classes, and although none of them is making a living in art, they will all tell you that they have learned more than art in their classes. This summer, our classes paired art with real-world issues like climate change, the pandemic, and equality. With three different facilities downtown, we believe we are an important anchor here, and we are working on plans to further enhance our presence. We host many artists within a year's time in the apartment at the Arts Center warehouse, most recently Guido Van Helten and his assistant, Ian. We are proud of the role the Arts Center played in the creation of the most significant public art piece in downtown Salina, The Mill. I know firsthand the difficult choices you make every year at budget time. The money allocated to each of our arts organizations is vital to our existence. It's important that as city leaders, you continue to show support for the arts. Thank you for understanding that, as important as they are, there's more to our civic life than good roads, sewer systems, clean water, and snow removal. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Soderberg, for all your family's support of the arts, as well as for your service here on the City Commission and as mayor. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? I don't see any hands raised online, so we'll go ahead and end the study session. Thanks again very much, all of you, for being here today. It was wonderful to get an update on the state of the arts in Salina.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Welcome to the Monday, October 25, 2021 Salina City Commission meeting. First, I will request confirmation that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been provided.
Yes.
Thank you very much. We'll proceed with roll call.
Mayor Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hopick.
Here.
Commissioner Peck.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Thank you. With that, we will proceed to the Pledge of Allegiance and have a moment of silence. And if you would, please keep the 161 Salinans who have lost their lives to COVID, including six last week, in your thoughts.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have any awards and proclamations today, so we will proceed to Citizens Forum. Citizens Forum is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the commission. I would ask that you limit your remarks to three minutes, and please identify yourself by your first and last name, and let us know where you're from. And with that, I will open it up for Citizens Forum. All right. Doesn't look like we have any takers today. Last call.
Oh.
Do we have a hand? Mr. Saran, no?
It's this question.
Oh. All right. Mr. Gardner, you're a member of the public, so yes, if you're raising your hand, please feel free. All right. With that, we will proceed to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, Public Hearing: Issuance of Taxable Multifamily Housing Revenue Bonds. 5.1A, Conduct Public Hearing. 5.1B, Approve Resolution Number 21-7997 Determining the Advizability of Issuing Taxable Multifamily Housing Revenue Bonds for the Purpose of Financing the Acquisition, Construction, and Equipping of a Commercial Facility to be Located in the City and Authorizing Execution of Related Documents.
Thank you. With that, I will declare the public hearing open and turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. As was mentioned, we are here to talk about a development being done by Dover Development out of St. Louis, Missouri. They have entered into an agreement to purchase a portion of land west of the Knox Sandpit with plans to develop an assisted living center, memory care facility on the site, and that is off of Ohio. There's a pond where we currently do drainage retention, so if you're driving down Ohio, it's before you get to Stone Lake as a development area. This property is owned by Stan Byquist. He filed an application requesting annexation of the 34-acre tract of land located between the Knox Sandpit and South Ohio Street. So it's essentially from the pond forward. The Planning Commission has considered the Lakeview Estates, which is what we are now calling that portion of the property, petition for voluntary annexation on September 21, 2021, and approved that 7-0. The City Commission considered that same request for annexation on October 11, 2021, and approved the ordinance on first reading, and then second reading was October 18, 2021. Therefore, the property is now annexed into the city. As part of the IRB process, this is kind of a pivotal piece of information, because if we are annexing, or if we are dealing with a property still in the county, how we move forward with the IRB is slightly different. And because the property is now in city limits, it's just the City Commission making that IRB decision, rather than the county and the city. So, part of the timing of this project. As you read on, and I'm sure you noticed in the staff report, there are a lot of different moving pieces here. In addition to the annexation, this property also, now that it's in city limits, needed to be platted and zoned. So, PDD zoning, or Planned Development District, has been proposed for the assisted living facility site. The Planning Commission voted 7-0 approving the PDD zoning and approving the preliminary plat. Plating is probably the longest piece of this process, so preliminary plat essentially sets those conditions and gets them on the road to moving towards final plat. Actions like zoning and annexation and the IRB are occurring while work on the final plat is being done. So as mentioned in the staff report, the Planning Commission should be seeing, you know, here in early November, the final plat request. And then, once they act on the plat, you as the City Commission get the request for easements and right-of-ways to be dealt with that property, and that finalizes the plating process. That would roughly have it in front of you in December, and would kind of wrap up that whole development process. When looking at properties, we also look at special assessments, benefit districts, cost recovery, and impact fees. This property in particular has two. There is a cost recovery fee on the South Ohio Water Line and Drainage Impact Fee related to the Knox Sandpit, or the large pond central in that property that I mentioned earlier. This fee will be due at the time a building permit is requested by Dover Development, and that will be approximately $5,570.88. The Drainage Impact Fee will total $6,912 and be due at the time the building permits are applied for. And this site is not within a mapped floodplain or floodway. Now focusing on the IRB process itself. As per state statute, this public hearing that we are conducting today was advertised in the Salina Journal on October 15, 2021, and via registered mail, USD 305 and Saline County Commissioners were notified on October 12, 2021, of today's public hearing. If you were to act on Resolution 217997, which authorizes proceeding with the project in issuing of the industrial revenue bonds, you will also be authorizing execution of the attached agreement. As a reminder, for housing, IRBs, we do a performance agreement, and that simply indicates timelines, development criteria, those key things that you identified as part of your housing policy, that you wanted to make sure those projects were able to accomplish. So the performance agreement goes hand in hand with this. As noted, the project will commence construction May 1 of 2022, and complete construction and commence tenant leases November 1 of 2023. And the rental rates are as follows. They're a little different than a traditional multifamily complex, kind of like we saw at Magnolia Point. So there are 74 units total. The anticipated monthly lease rate is anywhere from $4,000 to $7,000. That's depending on the care type, apartment style, and additional care levels. As you remember, there's both memory care here, and then assisted living as well. Minimum finished square footage is 69,000 square feet. As per the housing incentive policy, because now that we're past Magnolia Point, we're past Ryan Edition, we're now running everything through the policy as part of that decision-making criteria. In the IRB category of the policy, just to kind of get through the gate, you have to have 50 units, which this project's at 74, okay? Check. And will be operational within three years, as required by the minimum standard set forth in the policy. As we noted, they'll be leasing by November 1 of 2023. Checks that box as well. Then that's where we start to get into the desirable criteria, and these are things that you've highlighted and weighted with a pointed value to see if a project is worthy of that whole spectrum of tax waiving. So, in an IRB, that whole window is 10 years. And so the policy indicates that the number of points, the more points you accumulate, the longer you can have the added tax liability exemption. So noted here, this project comes in at eight points, which gets a full 10-year exemption at 100%. The city's expenses related to issuing, or actually, I should say, I'm sorry, the expenses related to the application of this project will be covered by Dover Development and their purchase of the industrial revenue bonds. And then the adoption of this action would also be 100% abatement of property taxes for 10 years for all taxes, with the exception of a portion of school capital outlay, those are always exempted from IRB, levied by all taxing entities not to exceed $15 million, as well as sales tax exemption for applicable construction materials associated with this development. And remember, an IRB has both the ad valarium tax and the sales tax on construction components. So this applicant is asking for both those pieces. And based on the policy and the scoring, they are eligible for the full 10-year 100% With that, Madam Mayor, we are conducting the public hearing, and staff recommends filing the public hearing that the body act on Resolution 217997, and recommends option 1.
Thank you very much, Ms. Driscoll. Are there any questions for staff?
And Madam Mayor, I will note that representation, both legal counsel for the developer and representation of the developer are both here, and representation from bond counsel.
Any questions for any of those parties?
The only question I have, on the plating, are we plating, and it doesn't really matter maybe to me, but the entire acreage, are we just plating the ground being used for the assisted living and memory care units?
The PDD is just on the assisted living facility, and I think we are plating the whole, I'd have to double-check the scene down here, or Stan Byquist, owner of the property, is here.
Hi, Stan Byquist, 2601 South Ohio. We are plating all of the property west of the body of water, the drainage facility, and that's approximately 34 acres.
Because that takes in the other housing units that were going to be developed, both along the pond back there and on the south. Okay. And because I think that shows, are you going to have the two exits, is there two or one exit onto Ohio Street?
Right now, there'll be two exits. One will be their main entrance for, you know, their customers and the emergency vehicles. And then there'll be another street coming in, which will access the rest.
Okay. That's what I kind of had, remember. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Mr. Byquist?
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Since this is a public hearing, we'll open it up for comments from the public. As you approach, please give your first and last name, and limit your remarks to three minutes.
Mitch Robinson, Salina Community Economic Development Organization. Glad to be here again tonight and talking about another exciting housing project. And obviously, we're in support of this. We see this as continuing part of the work that the city has been doing. This lady has been doing an outstanding job representing the community, and this is another piece of a needed type of housing. This is one that we don't think of very often in terms of a large need, but it is a growing need. And I can tell from my own family experience, if the facility like this had been where my father was, we would have had him housed in that. And it looks like there'd be a really super facility, and we're in support of this, and I personally am in support of this. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this issue?
Dalton McDowell, Salina. On that being out there, with more on the, I don't know how to say this, but I'm going to, I'm going to try, sorry. Is that going to mess up with, or cause any issues between Station 3 on the fire department, since they also are going to be the medical response for that? Because I know Station 4 does everything on the hill, which they have too. That might be the only question I have.
Thank you, Mr. McDowell. I'll throw it to Ms. Driscoll, but as I recall, when we actually did the plating of this, whenever that was, a few weeks ago, we did have representatives from the Salina Fire Department who assured that they could offer coverage within that added property to Salina. And I don't know if you've got anything to add, Ms. Driscoll?
No, I would only add, as both part of the zoning process and the PDD and the plating process, staff and property owner do work with the fire department to ensure there's adequate coverage. That's an essential part of the approval process.
Yeah. Thank you. And because we did discuss the emergency access to that facility when we were doing the plating as well. So, yeah, we are aware of the additional burden that it creates for the firefighters. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? And I don't see anyone online, so I will return it to the commission for further discussion or action.
Need to close the hearing.
Oh, thank you very much. My vice mayor has reminded me, we need to close the public hearing first. Now we'll bring it back to the commission.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 217997.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 21-7997. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Which takes us to our consent agenda.
Item 6.1, Approve the Minutes of October 18, 2021.
All right. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve them.
Mayor.
Move to approve the minutes of October 18, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of October 18, 2021. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Item 7.1.
Item 7.1, authorize the mayor to execute a limited warranty deed with reversionary and limited warranty covenants and retained easement with USD 305 regarding conveyance of real estate associated with the Jerry Ivy Park tennis courts.
Thank you. I don't know if I'll be looking at Mr. Cotton or Mr. Wood. Mr. Cotton?
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, Mayor Hodges, and members of the commission. I'm here today on behalf of the city manager to seek approval of the execution of a limited warranty deed and retained easements to transfer approximately 3.66 acres of Jerry Ivy Park to USD 305 in order for them to make significant tennis upgrades to the existing courts for Salina South High School, Salina South Middle School tennis programs, as well as for the physical education classes. As you may or may not be aware, Jerry Ivy Park was built on property originally owned by USD 305. As part of the sale of this property to the city of Salina, the city agreed to build the existing four tennis courts for the use of the public and South High School. The proposed ownership transfer to USD 305 would allow the city to avoid repair, maintenance, and replacement costs associated with the existing four tennis courts in Jerry Ivy, while securing assurances that public access will be maintained to the same number of courts, subject to the terms of the attached deed. The public protest period elapsed on October 15 without a protest petition being submitted. Therefore, the statutory notice requirement has been satisfied. There are six distinct revisionary deed covenants that, if not followed, return the property back to the city of Salina. These items cover failure to resurface the existing courts, failure to notify the city of the intent to remove the existing non-operable lights, failure to build new courts, failure to allow public access to four of the eight new courts, failure to use the facilities for a period of 18 consecutive months, or attempt to transfer the 3.66 acres without notice to the city. The city has no reason to believe that USD 305 would not follow through on the completion of this agreement, and therefore recommends proceeding with the project. Chris Upson from USD 305 is here for any specific questions about the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cotton. Any questions for Mr. Cotton or for Mr. Upson?
Mayor, if I may, one small point of clarification. I think you will find at your places a deed that includes relatively minor, but we thought necessary, proposed red line changes there in Reversionary Covenant Number 5 on Page 3. Those are for the purpose of clarifying the process. As remote as that is, it was intended to clarify the process that would be involved should that occur. should that occur. The other thing that was noted since distribution of your packet is that James Fletcher is now the USD 305 board chair, so the deed has been modified to show him as the signatory for the board. Given the nature of the covenants in this case, that is why USD 305 will actually approve and acknowledge their acceptance of the covenants before the deed is recorded. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bengston. Any questions for Mr. Bengston about the, and for those of you watching at home, their minor revisions mainly of syntax, and doesn't in any way change the content or the conditions of the document that's posted online? If not, then we will open it up to members of the public who would like to comment on this item. All right. Seeing none here in the room and seeing none there, I will bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Mayor, I move we authorize you to execute a limited warranty deed with revisionary and limited warranty covenants and retained easements with USD 305 regarding conveyance of real estate associated with Jerry Ivy Park tennis courts, and noting the two amendments noted by council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to execute a limited warranty deed with revisionary and limited warranty covenants and retained easement with USD 305 regarding conveyance of real estate associated with the Jerry Ivy Park tennis courts with the revision so noted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here, Mr. Upson. Item 7.2.
Item 7.2, authorize the city manager to execute a contract for engineering design services with H.W. Lochner, Inc. in the amount of $196,905.05 for engineering services for the Centennial Road improvements, project number 21025.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stack?
Could I, before Mr. Stack, I meant to bring this up on the last item 7.1, at least in my packet. The picture at the very end of 7.1 actually goes with 7.2.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that the map of Centennial Road? Okay.
Yes.
Were we looking for a tennis court and couldn't find it?
Well, I kept looking.
Waterwell. Have they moved Salina South?
Well, I said, that's, South property goes a little further than I thought. Yeah.
It was a test.
Yeah, this item is about a half mile for engineering design services for Centennial Road on the south end of town. We were before you about a few months ago with a KDOT economic development agreement, getting $2.1 million from KDOT. So that was a good partnership with KDOT, especially in light of the Schwan's project. That's kind of what started the interest out there in that whole area, kind of building up with the airport and Schwan's expansion. So, KDOT saw that economic development money was good for that area. So we were excited to possibly get the extension of Centennial. Let's see if I bring my pointer, sorry. Waterwell is the big block there on the south end, a big square as you go to the north. We're basically just tying in with what was done about four years ago on Centennial in that area where we put some concrete paving and did some sidewalk and trail improvements. And so we're hoping just basically just to extend that to the south. Now, seems like it should be easy, but it's just, there's just always other things in that area. There's a lot of utilities in that area, and a lot of, kind of like our five biggest fiber optic companies seem to have a pipeline right out there. So it's a large corridor full of utilities. And then on the west side of the road is drainage, so there's a large area of drainage comes through that area, and we're hopefully be back to you in a month or so with another contract for some drainage improvements on the north end, further north. But this area somewhat is affected by that. So, we'll be looking with Lochner here to talk more about that drainage and how kind of it will be conveyed. And a little bit of background here, let's see, the city requested statements from qualified engineering firms, and got four responses here in town, our four local firms, we have four good firms here in town, Wilson, Lochner, Cow Valley, and Schwab Eaton, with all with offices here. So it's always a tough decision, trying to figure out who's the most qualified, because really, they're probably all qualified, but it's just the kind of who puts their best foot forward, has the most experience. And Lochner was that in this case. It was, three staff members looked at it, and we all unanimously agreed that we thought Lochner had the best proposal or request for qualifications, and did a good job presenting themselves. They've worked in this area. They completed the last project for us just north of here. They've worked for the airport a lot. They're currently, are they, yeah, I'm not sure they're working for them yet or not, but they'll be in the hunt for some work around the airport as well, and have worked with that in that area just for a long time. So they really have a lot of familiarity, and we felt like they were the best firm for the job. Let's see, we have, the city actually has a surveyor that does a lot of our surveying, which is nice, because we can kind of get ahead of the game. So hopefully, if this agreement is approved today, then Lochner can hit the ground running. So, yeah, we've already surveyed that area and kind of have it laid out with our surveyor, and so they'll be able to take it from there. And they've worked with KDOT a lot more with their different reviews and the different staff members at KDOT. This is going through the economic development group, which is a little bit different. We actually haven't worked with them a whole lot from a city's perspective, so we're glad to have their help in this regard. And the schedule is quite a long schedule, but there's just a lot of reviews and permitting and design that occurs. So it's looking at possibly construction in late 2022, I guess it'd be '23, basically is what we're looking for. So it's still a couple of years away, but trying to get it designed as fast as we can. And we feel like we're ready to hit the ground running with Lochner. So, a few more things to look at. If you have a few pictures here, could you cycle through the next one there, Scott? Just kind of shows, there you go. That's just kind of the intersection. That's not really very clear, the intersection at Waterwell. There's just a lot of, there's drainage tubes that go to the east under there, and that intersection needs to be improved because of the truck turning movements, and just trying to improve that area as far as access. It's fairly narrow road, so it'll be good to get that improved. Next slide. That's the intersection at north, or just north side of Vortex, basically. So there's a lot of drainage in there, there's four tubes under there, it's pretty flat, pretty large ditch. So we're actually thinking this road may end up being kind of in the same general location. It's kind of shifted to the east already. A lot of drainage on the west, a lot of utilities on the east. So it may end up being kind of in the same general location when we're done, maybe not quite centered in the right way, just because there's a lot of drainage on the west side that's already pretty well there and working. We'll be able to improve it, but it's a nice open area for maintaining some kind of a ditch, as well as storm sewer system that's in pipes. Next slide, please. There's a double box as you go further to the north, close to the FedEx and the bus, Eldorado Bus Facility there on that corner, and quite a bit of standing water in the ditches, so we're just hoping to get that improved.
Superior now, yeah.
Superior, yes. That's right. They've just bought that, so it'll be here next. Yep. So that's an area of improvement. And, yeah, in light of that, we've really only got about five property owners. We've got Vortex, Superior, Salina Airport Authority. East side is Doug Bradley, and they're working on a development on the east side. There's been some preliminary plans on development on the east side as well. And then one other property owner there that, so we feel like we're going to be able to meet, we didn't really have any public meetings scheduled. We thought we'd probably just do individual meetings with each one, talking about access and making sure we can take their concerns into account. Our thinking is, next slide, that's just looking to the south, so it's kind of pretty open, and looks like it should be an easy project. There's a lot underground, a lot in that area, and a lot of access, about 1,600 cars a day through here, so we'll have to figure out a way to reroute those. We're thinking either a phased approach or closing portions of the road. Scanlan, of course, is just a quarter mile to the west, so it goes through, and you can get around pretty well. Part of this contract has us looking at Scanlan, just because it seems to struggle. I wouldn't say it fails, it just gets potholes a lot faster than we'd like it to, and it's got some now. So we want to make sure it can hold up for increased traffic, but that's something that Lochner will help us look at as well, and probably that'll be the main detour route for everybody. Last slide, I think that's the last slide. I believe so. Yep. Okay. So, we're interested in getting started with Lochner. I'd be here for questions, whatever questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Stack?
Sidewalk would be on the east or west side of the street?
The current side, east side, is where the current one is, just to the north. And there's actually a sidewalk on the west as well, so it's going to be both sides. We'll have five foot on the west is what we're thinking, and 10 foot on the east. That's kind of what's there now, and we feel we'll just continue.
Part B of the question. Is this a sidewalk to anywhere in particular?
Not yet.
I want the sidewalk, don't get me wrong. But there's still no official connectivity from that whole airport part over to South Ninth Street.
Correct.
Was there a plan to eventually continue the same along Waterwell over the freeway and over to the South Ninth, or not currently?
Yeah, eventually, yeah. That's the hard part about this. Yeah, we're almost picking an area and building more sidewalks, and we still have no connectivity to get to those sidewalks from the middle of town. You know, Magnolia, Schilling, you can get, there is a sidewalk along Schilling, so arguably you can get there from Schilling. But really, the K-State Salina and some of the areas really disconnected with the Magnolia kind of donut hole there. So, we do have a sidewalk on Schilling, will be connected to that, but it will end. You are right, we'll just have a sidewalk to the end there, and I don't know.
Almost ride down, turn around, and come back, it'll be a nice measured course.
It'd be a nice 10-foot wide sidewalk, and people will do that. People, Vortex, you know, a lot of employment, really an employment hub out there. So we believe people will use it, and feel like it's a good time, they need to build it for the future, I guess, at this point. I don't know if Waterwell will improve before the northern area, or how that will go, but that's where we're headed.
It shows on here that the city and county are splitting the 400,000 matching. Is this 196.9 part of that 400,000?
It is not.
It is not? Okay. That was my question.
No, KDOT has us at a match, 200,000, 200,000 for each of us for just construction only. So the preliminary engineering and right-of-way and anything, I guess, construction engineering when we inspect it, that'll be on us.
And that's not being split with the county?
Nope. It is not at this point, not this time.
The other question I had is, and this is just out of, for the record, Waterwell Road going east to the interstate, is that maintained by the city or by the county?
Mostly county. I think we pick up around Yoast is where we start getting into city-county splits. But it's.
I'm just concerned with additional traffic there at some point, if Waterwell Road's going to have to be upgraded or anything, or just, at least, I'm not sure what its capacity is. You talk about Scanlan, or the other road to the west of Centennial having potholes and stuff, because just.
Yeah, Waterwell is definitely of interest by the county. They maintain that one at a higher level. It is a, what do we call that? It's one of the hall roads, the waste landfill hall routes. So it is one that they've maintained at a pretty high level over the years because of really just the increased traffic for our landfill. So it's, at this point, you know, we don't see 100 trucks a day is kind of what they've, what did we say, 55 to 100 trucks a day increase over the next few years for Schwan. So it will.
Per week.
Per week out, it'll increase for sure. But at this point, yeah, we're still only talking 1,600 cars a day on Centennial, so it's going to be a while before it really, we feel like at that point, it's going to be outgrowing itself on Waterwell, because Waterwell's, I'm not sure if it's any higher than that, I should have looked at our map to see, but it's similar to that. So we're still, you know, east Magnolias, 8,000 to 10,000 cars with a lot of Johnson trucks on it. It seems like that's about the time when we really start to get looking at big-time upgrades.
I had a question. In terms of this specific contract for $196,905, does this fit within our total project budget or scope as to what we had set aside for that line item?
At this point, yeah, it's $2.5 million of construction funding, so we feel like, yeah, we're right in there. These funds will have to come from our, the preliminary engineering funds, the design funds here for Lochner need to come from our, kind of our sub-CIP sales tax or gas tax budgets for streets, so that's.
But just in terms of this $200,000 contract, I mean, that was what we had expected to pay for these.
Oh, yes. Yeah, this is.
I mean, does it fall within, like if we had budgeted, you know, 150 or 100,000? I mean, where does this fall? Is it in line with the line item that we had dedicated for the engineering of this road?
I don't think we had anything. We just got the funds from KDOT just recently. So, yeah, we really don't have, they basically give you the construction dollars, and you're stuck coming up with the money for a design. So at this point, we've just proposed taking it out of our sub-CIP sales tax or gas tax budgets for streets. Now their fee, you know, with a $2.5 million construction project, normally 10% is a fair, kind of a fair number for design of that, 10 to 15, actually, probably higher in some cases, depending on complexity of it. But with our surveying, we're able to get quite a bit of that done early, and so then that doesn't show up in their fee, and so we're actually less than 10% on their design fee. So that part's good, but as far as whether this was budgeted or in line, I mean, we think it's definitely in line.
So it's less than you would have anticipated?
Yes, that's for sure on that. But as far as, are you going to compare it to some number? We don't, we didn't have a number anywhere that was, this was what it was going to be.
Okay.
Yeah, I think your question, and I was kind of getting, kind of a long way to get to that, was had we budgeted that 200,000, basically, when we did our strategic planning and stuff? I don't know if we had that budgeted with Debbie or not when we did our sub-CIP and stuff, and I can't remember.
I can't, I can't remember either.
Yeah, I think we're just pulling that out of the regular street maintenance budget that we use, so the allocation of gas tax or sales tax that we do on an annual basis. So it would just be one of those sub-CIP projects that would come up every year.
As we look at dollars to spend in the upcoming year or so, that'll just come off of that.
Well, and, yeah, we figured it encumbered in '21, so we're, it doesn't impact '22, I don't believe at this point. It's just we still have some money in '21.
Still have enough money in there, okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Debbie's nodding, so that means that we have enough.
Oh, there she is. I didn't see her.
We can pay the engineers.
If we didn't have the money, she'd probably be waving her arms out.
Yeah. It's, like I say, it's easy to spend $4.2 million, but as you know, we're trying to get them all out, and we've got a few projects still left to go this year, but we're still, we're still have a couple hundred thousand that we have to take care of for this.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Stack? Any questions or comments from members of the public? And I don't know if Mr. Gardner sees if anybody has their hand raised? Nope? All right, well, we'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Thank you.
Mayor, Hodges, I move we approve the selection of H.W. Lochner and authorize the city manager to execute the engineering services agreement with H.W. Lochner, Inc. for Centennial Road improvements, city project number 21025, in the amount of $196,905.05.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes 5-0. Item 7.3.
Item 7.3, approve ordinance number 21-11086, authorizing the city of Salina, Kansas to issue its industrial revenue bonds, series 2021, Great Plains project, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $20 million for the purpose of the acquisition, renovation, and equipping of a commercial facility, and authorizing certain other related documents and actions.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. This project actually came before City Commission back on August 6, 2020, when we brought forward this project, the expansion of Great Plains, and they were requesting industrial revenue bonds. This is kind of the culmination of that process. On December 7, we held a public hearing, and that's what we did earlier for another project, but this is kind of the ending of that process. We held that public hearing and determined the viability of issuing those industrial revenue bonds on December 17. of issuing those internal revenue, or industrial revenue bonds on December 7, 2020. Since that time, city staff has been working with bond counsel to develop a trust indenture, a site lease, a project lease, a bond purchase agreement, and a performance agreement with Great Plains. And at this point, we're to the point of actually issuing those bonds for them. The general obligation, industrial revenue bonds will not be a liability of the city. They will be a sole liability of the tenant, which is Great Plains. There will be no future financial burden for the city for those bonds. However, when this property is annexed into the city, there will be an abatement of property tax on the property for 10 years. This action is to approve on first reading ordinance 2111086, authorizing the issuance of the bonds for this Great Plains project. You can approve that on first reading. You may amend the ordinance as you deem appropriate. You might postpone consideration of the ordinance. You could approve it on first reading and ask us for additional information if you'd like that prior to second reading. Or you could vote to deny it, resulting in the Great Plains project not obtaining their property tax exemption through IRBs. We do have members from Bond Counsel here if you have questions for them. And I would stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Pack. Questions?
I think you made the comment, when it's annexed into the city, this property's already been annexed into the city.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we did that a while back. So if not, then we'd have to get the county involved like we talked about on Mr. Byquist. So, okay.
Good clarification. Any, any questions? Any other questions? I see that we have Bond Counsel and we do have a representative from Great Plains, Mr. Hall. Any questions for those folks? All right. I guess you're off the hook. Any, any public comments? And I don't see anyone with their hand raised. So we'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mayor Hodges, I move, we approve on first reading ordinance number 21-11086, authorizing the issuance of industrial revenue bonds, Series 2021, Great Plains Project, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed 20 million for the purpose of the acquisition, renovation, and equipping a commercial facility, and authorizing certain other related documents and actions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 21-11086 on first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Item 7.4.
Item 7.4, approve ordinance number 21-11089, authorizing the city of Salina, Kansas, to issue its industrial revenue bonds, Series 2021, Superior Contracting and Manufacturing Services Company Project, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $8,308,145.05 for the purpose of the acquisition, renovation, and equipping of a manufacturing and commercial facility, and authorizing certain other related documents and actions.
Ms. Pack?
Thank you. This project came before you, just a little history, on June 7, 2021. It's been a little bit more recent. July 12, we held the, on September 13, we held the public hearing. We have gone through the same process to create the same documents that we did with the prior project. The difference between this project and the prior project is this project will have a 30% abatement. So they will have a pilot. It'll be a 30% abatement for up to, period up to 10 years. As mentioned, these bonds are a little over $8.3 million. Once again, the tenant is the sole obligor of the bonds and will own all of the bonds through the duration of the property tax abatement. So again, this action is to approve the ordinance on first reading, to approve it with amendments, to postpone consideration, approve it with direction for prior to second reading, or to vote to deny, which would result in Superior Contracting and Manufacturing needing to find alternative financing. And staff recommends option number one. If you have any questions, everyone's here to answer.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Pack? Or for Mr. Millard? Or for Bond Counsel? Okay. Any questions or comments from members of the public? I don't see anyone online, so I'll bring it back to the Commission.
Mayor, I move, we approve ordinance number 211189, authorizing the city of Salina, Kansas, to issue its industrial revenue bonds, Series 2021, to Superior Contracting and Manufacturing Service Company Project, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $8,308,145.05 for the purpose of the acquisition, renovation, and equipping of a manufacturing and commercial facility, and authorizing certain other related documents and actions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 21-11089 on first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much to both, I'm going to say Superior, and to Great Plains. And we look forward to your expansions. So thank you very much, gentlemen. Item 7.5.
Item 7.5, 2022 Strategic Planning and Budget Sessions. 7.5A, approve ordinance number 21-11091, establishing specific reserve funds as recommended during the 2022 Strategic Planning and Budget Sessions. 7.5B, approve resolution number 21-7996, adopting financial recommendations presented during the 2022 Strategic Planning and Budget Sessions.
Ms. Pack?
Thank you, Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. It's not going to be a third one. Sorry, I couldn't get away with that one. This item brought to you is, as a result of the strategic planning sessions that we held earlier in the year, as well as the 2022 budget sessions, during those sessions, staff brought forward several initiatives, financial initiatives, as well as a recommendation to create some capital reserve funds to basically set aside some funding for specific areas that we were already funding in most cases, but to set those dollars aside so that we could assure that those dollars get spent on those specific action items. So as a result of those conversations, we are requesting that we establish new reserve, capital reserve accounts for the parks maintenance, capital maintenance items, fleet management, streets maintenance, building and facilities maintenance, and vehicles and equipment replacement reserves. Also, as a part of those conversations, we had, we talked about transferring some funds from some excessive fund balances that we saw during our June 14 study session. We talked about the general fund. We talked about the sales tax capital fund. And we also talked about the American Rescue Plan funding that the city was going to receive. So from those discussions, the recommendations and the direction that was given by you was to transfer $1.5 million from the sales tax capital fund to the parks maintenance reserve fund, transfer $1 million to the fleet maintenance management fund, transfer $550,000 to the street maintenance reserve fund, transfer $600,000 to the buildings and facilities reserve fund. And I will make a clarification on this staff report. It shows a $500,000 transfer from the sales tax fund into the vehicle and equipment replacement fund. That actually is funding from the ARPA funds, which comes later in the blue sheet. It was duplicated in those two tables. So we don't have 500,000 going from the sales tax fund and 500,000 going from the American Rescue Plan. It's just from the American Rescue Plan funds. Those transfers, we do have, and then along with that, the last transfer is the, the transfers from the American Rescue Plan funds. So we're transferring from those funds into the vehicle and equipment replacement fund. We're transferring $500,000 to parks maintenance from the American Rescue Funds. The River Renewal Project, we're setting aside 500,000. The Debt Service Reserve, we're transferring 500,000. We're setting aside 500,000 for station alerting, the facility audit implementation, and/or childcare financial assistance, $1.5 million to Baseball Enterprise, $1 million to the housing infill, and $1 million into housing for infrastructure. Those were from the American Rescue Plan. Transfers from, during those sessions, we also set aside funding for, out of the special parks fund balance for the Kenwood Pool demo, the rodeo grounds demo, and some rehab on the clubhouse, which are indicated in the blue sheet. We also are setting aside funding out of the general fund for some projects that we had brought forward for what we were calling back-of-house projects for agenda management, updating the city website, time and attendance, a pay plan implementation, a temporary grant coordinator, a facility audit, and to replenish the sales tax economic development fund. So today's action and request to you is basically just to put these into kind of a written format so that we have that kind of set into documentation. So we have two action items today. The first, we need to create the funds. The funds are created by state statute, by ordinance, by the city. So ordinance 2111091 will create the additional five funds, I believe, one, two, three, four, five funds, to be held as capital reserve funds. In those funds, we'll be, instead of taking the funds that we typically annually allocate and spend out of the sales tax capital fund, our future intent would be to transfer that, those allocations into these funds, so that if it's not spent that particular year, it sits in that particular fund for that purpose. That way, we don't lose sight of, oh, we only spent $200,000 on parks this year. It's going to be set aside for parks until we choose not to use it for parks. So ordinance 2111091 establishes those funds for the city of Salina. The normal options to approve, to amend, to postpone, or to vote to deny, with staff recommending option number one. The second is a resolution just adopting the financial recommendations, which is the transfer of those funds, or from the specific funds that we had identified into these specific funds. That's Resolution 217996. Same for options to approve, to amend, postpone, or vote to deny that resolution. I would stand for any questions, if you have any.
Set one. The ARPA funds come in two separate payments?
Yes, they will.
Do we fully fund certain ones of these this year? Does each fund get 50% of its allotment from that source this year and then 50% next?
We could do, we can't do anything until 2022 because we didn't budget it. So we budgeted that all in 2022. And we'll have that additional funding in 2022. So ultimately, it'll all happen in 2022.
Because we received the first half payment.
We did receive the first half.
When does the second payment due?
July 1 of 2022.
It's July. I couldn't remember how far now.
Ms. Pack, remind me what kind of dollars you were talking about in the facility audit implementation?
We set aside, either for the implementation of that, or if we chose to do something with childcare, we set aside $1 million.
Right. And did we talk a dollar amount for the facility audit?
Not in particular. We don't have a clue. The audit itself, I think we set aside out of project listings.
Yeah, about $50,000, I think.
It was $50,000 for the audit itself. That million dollars was for implementation if we had to do any improvements, or we chose to do any improvements from that audit.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Any questions or comments from members of the public? Not seeing or hearing any. I'll bring it back.
I do like the fact we're setting up these funds so we don't lose track of these accounts. I think that was a good decision that was made at the strategic planning.
I will note, too, that we were just notified last week that we will be getting additional American Rescue Plan funding. I looked today, it was about an additional $21,000 this year and an additional $21,000 next year. And their explanation was the people that did not accept to receive funds, those allocations were then reallocated to those that did accept funds. So we're going to get a little bit more.
That's great. That's great. Thank you.
Mayor, I move approval of ordinance 21-11091, creating the parks maintenance reserve, fleet management reserve, street maintenance reserve, building and facilities maintenance reserve, and vehicle and equipment capital replacement reserve funds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve on first reading ordinance number 21-11091. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes 5-0. And that takes us to the resolution.
Mayor, move approval of Resolution 21-7996, adopting financial recommendations as stated above.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 21-7996. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes 5-0, which takes us to development business.
Item 8.1, approved resolution number 21-7998, approving a license agreement with Blue Beacon International to allow the construction of a second-floor balcony that would extend over the public sidewalk at the front of the building located at 135 North Santa Fe Avenue.
Mr. Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I just have a couple updates from the blue sheet that was prepared and sent out. Since the blue sheet was sent out, I've learned that Blue Beacon International has now officially changed their name to Blue Beacon Incorporated and have done a company name change. So the agreement that's being proposed here will actually be with Blue Beacon Incorporated instead of Blue Beacon International. The other thing is that, at the time the blue sheet was prepared, Blue Beacon only had a contract to purchase this building. But I think at this point, they have now closed and become the owner. Some of you may be familiar with this as the location of the Western Discount Store on the west side of North Santa Fe. That store closed in 2008 and the building has remained vacant since that time. But Blue Beacon is proposing to make substantial renovations to the interior and exterior of the building to create a commercial tenant space on the first floor and two loft apartments on the second floor with front and rear-facing balcony. Their plans for the building were presented to and approved by the Downtown Design Review Board on September 9, 2021, with the contingent condition that the balcony, which would extend over the front right-of-way, would have to be approved by the City Commission through a license agreement. So an application was filed by Blue Beacon requesting authorization to construct a second-floor balcony that would extend over and into the public right-of-way, and that would face Santa Fe Avenue. We've noted that our city sign code allows for projecting signs and awnings to extend over public sidewalk. But there's no similar provision for balconies. And to the best of staff's knowledge, this is the first request we've seen for a front balcony that would overhang in the downtown area. What we've indicated is the balcony would extend out four feet six inches into the right-of-way and would be over 15 feet above the sidewalk area. It would have a black powder-coated steel railing. If the attached agreement is approved, the balcony would continue to be owned and maintained by the building owner. It would just be authorized to extend out over the public right-of-way. There were no comments or objections received from area utilities. And in your packet there, you should have, one, a black and white drawing that shows a cross-section of the balcony. And then there's a color rendering that shows all the exterior modifications that Blue Beacon is proposing to make. So this evening, you would have the option of approving the attached resolution, which would authorize the mayor to execute a license agreement with Blue Beacon Incorporated, not Blue Beacon International, to allow an apartment balcony to extend over the public sidewalk. You can approve that resolution with any amendments that you think are appropriate. You can postpone action this evening to a future meeting date if you would like to receive additional information. Or you could vote to deny the resolution, which would result in Blue Beacon not being able to construct the second-floor balcony as proposed. With that, I'd be open to any questions Commissioners might have.
Any questions for Mr. Andrew?
You said there'd be a balcony on both the east and west side, but the, let's say it'd be the west side, doesn't, it doesn't go the entire?
It's recessed in, so the balcony will not extend over the public alley. So that, that did not require a license agreement, only the one on the front, because there's a recess in the back area.
I was thinking that it was. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Andrew, it's correct that there's no support from the sidewalk up to the front balcony.
No, it'll just be hanging, just as in that elevation drawing. It will be hanged out from the building. There will be no supporting poles or anything that will go down to the sidewalk. And it'll only extend out about four and a half feet.
Any other questions for Mr. Andrew?
This will be a nice addition to the downtown, because that building's been...
Yeah. I don't know if people see the balcony, if it'll set a precedent with people wanting to emulate that or not. But this... to emulate that or not, but this is the first one that we've seen that would project out the front side of the building, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I see that the applicant, Mr. Walker, is here. Are there any questions for Mr. Walker? Do you wish to say anything? Okay, all right.
Is there a load rating on this somewhere?
I'm just getting ready to answer, just out of curiosity, what's holding the balcony up?
Guy Walker, 500 Graves Boulevard. I'm not sure I can, I'm not a construction expert by any means, but it is, there's, I believe there's beams that go back into the building, and that's the way, and then, so then that sticks out, those sort of extend out past the end wall, and that's what carries the load on the, for the balcony. It was engineered by Jim Manley, a local, I mean, he's the structural engineer that stamped the drawing, so. Archie Ponton told me we could put 400 people out there and it wouldn't fall, so I don't think you can really fit that many people, but he said there's no chance it's going to go anywhere. He said it's very well-designed, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
I guess as a... Well, nevermind.
No, sir, no.
Well, I'm just, this is a pre, guy, I'm just curious, like, do we, you know, in the future, would we have minimums that we would require in terms of load ratings?
That's a...
I'm thinking of Chicago and balcony fail, failures and...
Well, this, this would be, because it's, it's going to be an apartment project, this would be a commercial building, and then our building official's going to require that the structural engineer, in this case, Mr. Manley, establish the occupant load and the, and how much weight it can carry.
Okay.
And again, we're, I, I was trying to look at my notes again, but the building itself is only about 25 feet wide, and so the, it's going to be four and a half feet out and about 20 feet north-south. So it's, it's not going to be a large structure just because the frontage of the building is so narrow.
Yeah.
But should, should this be repeated on a larger scale, that, that would be looked at in terms of both the load-bearing capacity and occupancy. But this is for a single loft apartment, so it's going to be the loft resident and any guests that they have. It's not, it's not a public venue, so.
Right.
But I think you raise a good question, and in terms of, obviously, it's not relevant to the, the project under consideration today, but if we, that might be something to consider in the future, is establishing some sort of minimum expectations, you know, depending on how many feet they extend and how wide on the, the building frontage is. I mean, I think that might be a good conversation moving forward, just so we have those expectations established and, you know, we aren't having the same conversation if someone else approaches...
We can certainly look into it. I'm certain of the building codes that we have adopted already.
Are sufficient?
Have rules and regulations that would, would address this, but it's something we can look into for sure.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Andrew.
Thank you.
Any, any questions or comments from members of the public?
Dalton McDowell, Salina. How tall would that be, just out of curiosity? That's downtown, down here off of where all the concrete work was at. Is that going, if, when you guys have to go in and replace all that with all the vibration of the jackhammers and the equipment and the heights, is that going to cause an issue on this, on replacing all that concrete underneath of it? If I'm, if I'm right, it's downtown, correct?
This building?
Yeah.
Under consideration, yes.
Yeah. Would that cause any problems?
I'm not sure.
I don't know. I don't think so. It's 15 feet off the ground. There wouldn't be any issue there.
Height's almost 16 feet.
Yeah.
If I looked at that right, so no, shouldn't be any problem.
I didn't see that.
Any other questions or comments? Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we approve resolution number 217998, authorizing the mayor to execute a license agreement with Blue Beacon, Inc., to allow an apartment balcony to extend over the public walkway at the front of the building located at 135 North Santa Fe Avenue.
Second?
A motion and a second to approve resolution number 21-7998. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes 5-0. Other business. Before we consider going into executive session, are there any items under other business that a commissioner would like to bring to our attention? Okay. If not, Mr. Wood, what are you thinking, or Mr. Bankston, whoever's going to be leading us through here? What's your sense of time that we will need?
Yeah, I think we can do it in 15 minutes, and we will be calling Jake Peterson from Clark Myes to join us on the phone.
Okay. Do we need to indicate that in the, the motion, that who's going to be included in terms of Mr. Bankston and Mr. Peterson?
It would not necessarily have to be in the motion, but it's ordinarily noted in the minute.
Right, right, right. Just noting for the minutes. Okay.
Mayor, I move the city commission recess into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss the subject of legal matters relating to the pending suit regarding the ordinance proposed by initiative petition with legal counsel based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 754319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room at 5:23 PM.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to recess into executive session for 15 minutes, resuming in this room at 5:23. City staff, Jacob Wood, Greg Bankston, and Jacob Peterson will also be in attendance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes 5-0, and we'll be back at 5:23.